Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's study session. On, what day are we on? The twentieth of July already. So, welcome, Mr. Rains. I think you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Our study session item this evening is related to the proposed CARES Act, and I've added COVID-19 Emergency Funding Plan from the city. And as the mayor and council recalls at our last council meeting, at our last actual study session, staff made a proposal to the mayor and council on a program that was driven by the feedback that we had received from the community, roughly sixty-six responses, as well as feedback that I had received from the mayor and council through various interactions that I'd had with each of you individually. During that meeting, it was abundantly clear to me that the mayor and council were wanting to achieve a couple of goals specific to this distribution of funds into our community. The first was that you wanted to focus and utilize our local nonprofits when we could. The second is that you wanted to develop a mechanism to get the money out, at least some portion of the money on the streets, and for use by our local residents. The third was that you wanted to reserve at least half of the funds for either, for future use into programmings, programming similar to what will be created, and potentially for budget stabilization as we evaluate the economy over the course of the next several months. And then lastly, there were a handful of projects that the mayor and council expressed individually during that meeting that have been incorporated into the, into the document that I've distributed tonight for the mayor and council. What I'd like, what I'd like to do is, and the document that I'm, the updated document I've put at everyone's seat there, what I'd like to do is to go, go, move through the, through some of the changes that I had made to the, to the program that I had introduced at the last meeting. And I'd like to, I'd like to skip the business and nonprofit assistance component to begin with, and really focus on areas that, through the dialogue that our staff has had with, with a number of nonprofits over the course of the last two weeks, talk specifically about some of the program that we're currently providing, because I'm not sure that our community is aware of the fact that we have been distributing some level of, of CARES Act funding prior. But more importantly, I want to take the opportunity to provide the mayor and council and our community with a bit of an overview and some of the, with some of the partnerships that we've created over the years. And in my view, these are individual nonprofits that currently have capacity to provide program, programming, and they have a process for providing programming. I know that one of the comments that was made during our last study session is perhaps we need to invite the nonprofit community to a council meeting or to a study session to learn more. And as I began to evaluate that, began to do a bit of outreach to the communities, I felt like that might be somewhat disorganized if we just had a study session with every nonprofit. And so what I essentially did is sent out some emails to individuals that are operating nonprofits that have a program that, at least from staff's perspective, are focusing or can focus on COVID-related incidents. And so I'll start with the residential assistance. Again, we'll come back to the business and nonprofit assistance here in a, in a second. But if you move down to the residential assistance, you'll see that there was, at least in the dialogue at the last study session, some interest expressed by the council to provide some funding for utility, rent, and temporary housing assistance. And, and I think that everyone is aware that, we know that we've got an organization in town in Cara that actually offers those programmings, but what, that programming. But we've also learned that United Way is doing some level of, of business in, in rent and utility assistance as well. Both of those organizations have indicated that they have a process in place to distribute money if it was, if the, if the council was open to entertaining an agreement with the, with the entities. And in fact, as the mayor and council is aware, we did recently allocate fifty-one thousand three hundred dollars to Cara for similar services through our CDBG allocation that was approved at the last meeting. So, again, you can, I, I hope that you see the theme that I'm trying to outline here is that we do have local nonprofits that, that have a program in place, that we've got existing relationships with, that ultimately, in my opinion, can expedite getting money on the street. One of the reasons that I've elected to list where we've, some of the partnerships that we've had and some of the funding that we've indicated, that we've established, funding levels that we've established, is that, at least in my mind, there was a message that I received from the council that we wanted to be cautious about how we distribute this money, that we don't want to put it all out today not knowing how long this COVID-19 pandemic is going to be around. And so, so really, the purpose in me listing some of these existing funding amounts is that it's very easy for us to establish a process that would require these entities to expend the money that we've already engaged with them for, to prove the, to prove their capacity, to prove their, their programming before we allocated additional dollars, if that's, if that's the pleasure of the mayor and council. Moving down on the item, again, there was a fair amount of interest in the city funding, direct funding for food banks. And while we know that we have a couple of food banks in town, the, you'll see that we have actually funded two particular programs out of our CDBG funds that in our, in our minds have not only the capacity to, to take on additional, to take on additional services, but they also have an accounting mechanism to ensure that the, that there's protocols in place for the distribution of, of food, for food and commodities. And as an example, we, the mayor and council approved fifty-one thousand dollars to go to the Seeds of Hope through CDBG funding, and actually is for a hot lunch program that they offer there at the center. But it also will be used to distribute food to two of our, two of our existing entities as well in the St. Vincent de Paul and the Casa Grande Food Bank. Again, what I know that the Seeds of Hope is looking for in their application is to enter into engagements with entities that have a process for verifying that individuals would qualify for, for the commodity. Not to say that we could not add additional resources for other food providers. The question would be whether or not we want to have some accountability as part of this process. The, the other piece of allocation related to food is the fact that we distributed an additional fifty-one thousand to CDBG, CDBG funds to the Dorothy Powell Senior Center, which is a program that we obviously, we operate ourselves.
It's a good one.
Yes, it is, in, in a partnership with the Penal Gila. And ultimately, what we've done is we've seen, we've seen the number of meal requests increase and, and have elected to expand that program as a result of that. The next item that there was some level of interest in funding, and it actually was one of the items that we received a fair amount of input from the community, is childcare. And as the mayor and council knows, we have an existing relationship with the Boys and Girls Club. They've, they are providing services in a couple of our city facilities. One of the thoughts that staff had is that if, if we're attempting to find more capacity for individuals that are struggling with daycare, perhaps school doesn't start. You've got a, a working parent or working parents, and they need some, some additional space that we could enter into agreements with the local school district, as well as with the Boys and Girls Club, to, to actually fund the costs associated with providing that particular level of childcare or after-school programming. We have not engaged much deeper or much further with, with either of those entities except to get a better understanding of their interest in providing additional programming, and they both have indicated that they would certainly appreciate being a partner with the city if it was a program that we wanted to stand up. One of the top items that was, one of the top programs that were expressed by the mayor and council is internet access for all of our students. And as I indicated in the last council study session, we are, we are working with the, both the elementary and high school, school districts in an effort to actually provide internet service through a portable device, through a modem, that is, that, that can be taken home to, to a residence. And both school districts are in the process of quantifying, they're doing an evaluation of the, of the technology and the devices they have. They're also doing evaluation and survey on the number of individuals, students, that would need to have some level of service in their home. We're waiting on that information, but ultimately would be a project that could be funded through this particular program.
Wasn't there an email from the, I thought I saw an email from the elementary school district with their needs?
From the high school district has provided us that information. The elementary school district is still finalizing their, their requests and, and summary of what they needed.
I thought the mayor, didn't we get a wish list?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. There was that wish list that was put out by the elementary school.
Joetta sent it to me, and I, I copied everybody.
Okay, all right. Then I'll, then I'll look for it. I have, I have not.
Thought I was going crazy. Thank you.
No, you're right.
Pretty big.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't, I mean, it was a wish list.
Right, okay, okay.
But it had, you know, take-home hotspots, and how many kids they had that don't have internet access, and.
Right.
Because they're, they're, through their CARES Act money, they're purchasing the actual laptops and mobile units.
Mayor, that didn't include the cost though, did it?
No, it didn't have the cost. It didn't have cost, Larry. It just had, I had the items.
Okay.
Yeah, so it may, that may have been why you missed it.
Okay.
If you, I have it, so I'll make sure you got it.
One of the things a lot of the schools around the country are concerned with is liability right now when you bring the students back in. And if they don't have adequate spacing or adequate protection of the children, if the city gets involved in it, we would be in that list of liability. Providing money for it is not, not us doing it, but.
Right, right.
I think that it is definitely something that, they've got some that are really good where, they used to have collaboration where they'd have three desks put together in the lower elementary rooms. But that's just three people breathing on each other. So what they've done is they've got one where they have them segregated into a single person, and they don't have any collaborative ability. And, and so that kind of helps keep it down. But so many of, like with the, what you hate to see is a whole bunch of kids running around and playing in the Boys and Girls Club area without some kind of safeguard. Because what, what you're hearing right now is too much of the, kids are gonna be okay talking, and they're talking about starting up school again and those kind of things. But there's, I think a three-year-old died of coronavirus here just very recently. And, and younger people are starting to do that. And so I, I think, you know, that we don't necessarily have a good, safe way to return students to school at this point in time, and I think that's really important. So, hope keep that door open until it gets closer to see what we can do to help.
And so I kind of see our role as a city is to be able to provide some of those hard costs and those, the opportunity and the equipment. We provide that to the particular districts and let them make those, because they're the ones that know. We don't know. They, they're the ones that know. They have the expertise in that. Tell us what you need. Here's what we can do for you and that. So that's how I see our role, and that would then eliminate any type of liability, I would think.
Yeah, I won't, I won't speak a lot about liability, but I do want to take just the, talk a little bit about, at least in my mind, the process, and want to get some feedback from the mayor and council on, on, on how we move through these, through these relationships. I, I see really two options for, for us. The first is an option by which we finalize this plan, and in our next council meeting, we bring the plan to the council to, to get authorization on the items that are included in the, in the program. And ultimately, we can move at that point down a path where the mayor and council can authorize, at that point in time, the city manager, myself, to enter into agreements up to a certain threshold, dollar figure. And ultimately, staff can go to work immediately on essentially modeling some of the existing program, particularly with those entities that we have relationships with already, and can put that money, get an agreement executed, and put that money on the streets rather rapidly. The other option would be that we bring those items, those individual items and agreements back to the council for your, for your consideration, and, and, and ultimately, just like we would our, any typical agreement.
I, I just, oh, go ahead.
I, I like the idea because one of, what I heard was we want to get it out there quick because people need it now. So it's an existing agreement. But would we give opportunity to other nonprofits to say, hey, you can apply? I think maybe that's your first section we're going back to, and if it is.
Right. Well, I, I guess, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, the question I would ask is, are you asking from a standpoint of them providing a, providing the, a program? Or are you asking specifically about them applying for assistance?
No, I'm asking, so if another nonprofit says, hey, I have this program that I would like to do, and they have to be accountable like all these other ones, and I need five thousand dollars to do this, could they, I think, I would think they would apply to us, the city, and, and do that. But also, the ones that you've already outlined would be good to get started because we know they have plans in place. We know they're helping people. They're proven partners. And we know that, you know, and they'll have to be accountable, and they have the reporting that we need back to make sure that our, that we know where this money is going and exactly what it's helping.
So, so the short answer to your question is, is absolutely can create some type of a mechanism that would either require a process, if you will, whether that be an application, whether that be request for qualifications or, or proposal for, from a, from a nonprofit to provide a specific service and/or ask for additional, ask for some level of, of funding to provide, to provide to a specific program for the community.
I look at it as like a mini, a mini grant program for those.
Which is, which is really the first item on, as a business assistance program.
That's what I said, if that's what it is, just tell me and we'll go back to that.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Bob? I had kind of just the opposite thought, Matt, and I was gonna ask the question. Can, can we dictate this stuff? I mean, are, do we fall under any requirements as far as bid process or request for proposals? And, and to the point, I was, I was going to say, can we specify? We're not looking at a nonprofit. We're looking at a no-profit. We don't want them to build in an administrative cost and, and, and all of that. We, we want them to take this money dollar for dollar and distribute it. So I guess, to Brett, my question is, can we dictate those kinds of terms?
Great point, great point.
Yeah, and I think, Mayor, Councilmember Huddleston, you always have the ability, and that's one of the reasons Larry is laying out the, the options that he have, in terms of how much you want to dictate that. We do have certain requirements that we would normally deal with in procurement. Although these are a little bit outside, there would be the possibility of using exceptions for that because, you know, we're granting funds as opposed to purchasing, and our procurement fund, our procurement code really deals with, you know, that piece. But as your legislative body, you get to make your determination on what this program ought to look like and how it ought to be applied. So going back to City Manager Rains, first point is, you know, we've kind of looked at a couple different models, which is one, have a broad authority granted by this council to Larry to sort of implement the plan, which would then be, you know, on staff and city manager to do it. Or bring each program back, right? Each contract back with a nonprofit. Each, you know, individual piece back to council individually. And those are, I think, the, the options that he was sort of laying out. But we, you can dictate some of those. It may be difficult to get some nonprofits to come in if you say, you know, no overhead because, you know, if they're running at a hundred percent, they can't add, you know, capacity. But certainly making, you know, you, you might want to look at those, and, and we usually would to say, hey, how much of that is going, right, to, to there? What does your budget look like for overhead? What does your budget look like for administrative fees? But ultimately, you're gonna have both the setup of the program and then the actual day-to-day administration of the program. I'm not sure, although you could get involved with that, that you want to get involved with the day-to-day administration of the program because we're gonna have to have twenty meetings, and it's gonna certainly slow the program down. But you can be as involved as you'd like.
And I was thinking, Bob, more like, you know, I mean, this is an example, and I'll talk about it in our reports, but like the Rotary Club wants to distribute food to people this, this week. And they have, they want to do so many meals, and it costs X amount, a thousand dollars, say, whatever that number is. Could they just apply? And that wouldn't be the overhead. I wasn't thinking the overhead stuff. I'm thinking like, if someone just wants to.
Cost of the meals.
A project.
And I, I agree with that. I, I was worried.
I didn't think about that.
I think I, yeah.
That we may get mired down in our own red tape, you know, if we branch this out too far.
Well, and, and to Brett's point, I think that, you know, there, having run a nonprofit, there, there is overhead. I mean, there, you know, people think that nonprofits are not businesses, and they really are. So I think that we have to realize that there could be some cost, minimal, I think it should be. I, I just feel that we need to really get this money out here as fast as possible. And I think that, you know, for Larry to, to have that capability on our behalf, if we set, you know, if he knows what our guidelines are and what we're looking for, I'm okay with that because, you know, people are, people need it yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one, I mean, an example of, of, like, for example, if we engage the Boys and Girls Club to add some daycare abilities, they have to hire some people. So that's considered overhead, but you're hiring somebody to run the program. Because it doesn't exist today, right? So in that situation, that might be an exception where some of the money might go to overhead. But I know in, in the nonprofits that I work with, and when we, we give grants out, we have specific programs. We don't do pass-throughs. We do a specific program, and it has a cost. So if it's baseball uniforms, it's, it's twenty baseball uniforms at a cost of X, and that's what the money goes to. So you have it more specific. And I think to Larry's point, we can have an application process like that. And I could, I certainly could help Larry build that because I've built a couple of them. And so. And so, and then, you know, share that with everybody via email so we can get this thing kind of moving.
But at the same time, we're going to have overhead in order, we are going to have to have overhead because we have to have somebody to manage that.
Correct. And so I think to the point that the council, we're going to establish a mount that we want to give Larry that authority for, and we'll keep the rest for that rainy day situation.
Mayor?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm sorry.
A lot of the provision is not capital items, a lot of it's service. They're doing a service and we're paying to help them do that service instead of saying, you know, and in others, if you had Little League, you'd be buying uniforms.
Right.
But there's different kinds and different ways to help them and different amounts of money. I think it's always very careful for us to keep our fingerprints out of those personally and if we pick some that we think work is go ahead and support them and help them all we can.
Lisa?
And I agree, and I think my biggest thing is, I understand that you may have talked to a couple nonprofits and we might focus on a couple nonprofits. I do like the idea of extending it or giving the opportunities to some out there that we might not use on a regular basis. So kind of like what you said, Matt and the mayor, you know, have an application process. And we don't have to recreate the wheel. I mean, this is done, I've already pulled up Apache Junctions, the county, Maricopa. So they have already applications and you've probably seen them, Brett, you know, so it, these things are already being done. But I think if we, you know, I just want to make sure that we're giving people the opportunity, other people the opportunity because just because we might work with one or two nonprofits, there's quite a few out there that are providing some great services. So I saw in Maricopa, you know, they have two, and on their website, it was just really clear, they had the Maricopa Food and Aid Distribution Nonprofit Assistance Program, and it had an application that was very clear on, you know, the requirements, how to apply. It had a committee that reviewed the applications, all the nonprofits and what they're offering, and then the committee, you know, the city staff, council, whatever, made that determination on who they were going to give that to for that, the food and aid distribution. And then they had the Maricopa Business Reemergence Program and the same thing. And I know you guys are aware because you probably looked it up, but so these cities are doing it already. But I just like the idea of not using one or two agencies because it's just, you know, appealing to more people. Because Cara, they have, they help a lot of people and they have a lot of different funding sources right now. So, and they do a great job, but they are overwhelmed. They have a lot going on, they just started their new calendar year, so all their funding is all, you know, you know, they're starting a new fiscal year, so they're starting everything there. So I like the idea of using them, but there could be other agencies that might help with some of those services that are needed. And I agree, I think we need to get the money out.
Yeah.
I mean, we, I mean, it's just critical, you know, we've already, and I'm glad we're doing our due diligence, we're making sure we're doing it right, we want to make sure that we're, you know, you know, just responsible for this. But I do think there's programs out there and I like the application process and I think it's critical to make sure that we are getting the messaging out when it comes in. I know you're going to probably talk a little bit more about the business part of it, loans or grants, but we have to make sure that we're getting it to everyone and not a select few that might be part of a particular nonprofit and that's how they're getting their information. So I find it critical for the application process and for us to review it and distribute the funds based on, you know, review and, you know, whatever they submit and whatever programs that they have. But there are some great, I mean, look them up, Apache Junction had a pretty decent one, the county, of course, but Maricopa's was a little bit more detailed.
Counties was pretty detailed, too.
Are there any other questions on the residential assistance? Again, at least in my, in my mind, if we focus on those specific elements that we've talked about and try to find the nonprofits to administer the funds in the most efficient manner, that is my recommendation is to utilize our partners, whoever they may be, within the community to distribute that versus the city standing up a program to ultimately try to manage these particular components. And that, in my mind, what I would be doing as a council where adopts this particular element at the next council meeting or considers it, we would, we would create a process that would establish thresholds that would allow me to execute some level of agreement very rapidly, and if it exceeded that threshold, then perhaps we'd be coming back for mayor and council for your, for your consideration. If I'm on the right track.
And I'm confused because that's a little different than what we talked about. You're, I mean, because you're saying, I know this is just the nonprofit distribution, but, so you're saying you're just going to choose a couple nonprofit, okay, so I guess I'm confused.
No, so ultimately, what I'm saying, particularly as we're dealing with this residential assistance versus the business assistance, that we can create a, at least, I'm, from our research, there are, there's going to be limited options in the nonprofit world to deal specifically with these particular categories, right? And there may be more, we're certainly open to engaging anybody that feels that they're in this space, but that ultimately, we would establish, the mayor and council would adopt these program elements, you would give me a threshold to enter into an agreement and distribute the money, whatever that may be, let's just say it's $25,000, $50,000 to each entity with a total, with a cap on what we're going to distribute to these programs that are already in place in the community that have an existing, that have an existing program and have capacity to distribute the money very quickly.
So to clarify, and I think Lisa, this is important to you, is these are two people that already have existing programs instead of having a nonprofit come in and create a program? I'm seeing this, we've got two people that have existing programs.
Right. And Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Corstens is absolutely right, profits that have existing programming in these particular spaces. If they want to apply, back to Councilman Huddleston's perspective a bit ago, if they want to apply to offer a new program to the community, then we would ask them to go through the application process under the, under the business and nonprofit assistance.
You have to be careful, too, that some of them don't take too big a bite.
Right.
And for any, I'm sorry, and for any groups that do happen to comply, they do have to have a nonprofit 501(c)(3) status or a program, correct?
Right.
If, I just want to jump on and endorse that, I think that's kind of what I was saying. Cara and the food bank are very good examples. I may be wrong, but I think if we offer them a dollar, they can give away a dollar because they've already got, they've already got the staff, they've already got the procedures. I don't think they would add 10% for administrative costs. But other nonprofits will, they'll say, well, we can give it away, but we're going to have to hire this person and this person and this person, and it's going to eat up our money.
And I think you're right, Bob, so, and so I think that's the question that I have to Larry is, so are, is some, how are they going to submit that? Are they, is there going to be an application they're sending to you? Is it you personally? Is it, who's going to review, whether it's Cara, United Way, Seeds of Hope, whoever it is? What is the process? Seeds of Hope sees, we're going to post something, I would imagine, on our website.
That's right.
So Seeds of Hope sees it and comes, what do they do? Is it an application?
Ultimately, what I'm envisioning to present us with a scope of services and the distribution of money in these various categories.
Okay.
And so they would submit, they would submit that document that ultimately would be used as an exhibit to an agreement that we would enter into based on what we agreed to with them.
So you'll have a deadline? It'll go to you personally or is it going to go somewhere staff member?
My sense is it'll come to our office, McKenzie Letcher's not in the room, but it may be him that's getting, getting assigned to this, to at least his first phase of the project. And what it will do is allow us to get a better sense of the nonprofit world and those individuals, those individual entities that believe that they're providing some level of service in this space.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And at least in my mind.
There will be a process.
If we, if the threshold, if the council will feel comfortable with establishing a dollar threshold, we can, we can in fact engage multiple entities that are doing work in each of these spaces very, very easily.
And I think that's what's important to me. I want to make sure that it's a process of if someone asks, we know what that process is. You know, we come in, we document, you know, the scope of service that was given, there's some type of, you know, matrix or requirements, you know, in order for them to qualify, and then they're, you know, given the, given the funding. I just want to make sure that there's some type of trap, tracking and, not to make it bureaucratic, you know, you don't want to, I don't, you know, that's not the issue, it's just more, let's see where the money went, what they're using it for, so we can just track and let the public know what we did with the money that we were given.
I feel like it would be very smart ship agreements that we have in place today where there's some type of a reporting mechanism that we typically require quarterly, we may, we may want to make it a monthly type of a reporting at this particular time with a summary of how the funds are being used.
My biggest concern here, though, really is not looking at somebody else that's got an idea that they could do it. I'm looking right now, because we're in an emergency situation, is I want somebody with a track record. I want somebody that we've dealt with, we've seen and we've done and that sort of thing at this point in time. Absolutely, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, if somebody came out of the, somewhere out and said, hey, we'd like to be able, that's all well and good, but you know what, give us a track record right now. We're, I believe we're in an emergency situation and we can't afford a learning curve. And these groups have that record and they've never failed to provide for what funds we've had. And were we in different circumstances, I definitely would, I am always for letting other people do it. But right now, these are people that have done it, they know our community, they know our needs, they know the faces of these people, and I just feel like we just need to give as much authority to you to say, go have at it.
Matt? I think, I see a two-pronged, I mean, part of it's going out on the street and then someone else may, you know, like you said, I know, again, the Rotary Club's doing a thing and it's not, not a huge amount of money, but they could apply and say, hey, we're going to do this.
Got it, it's a grant, it's a grant process.
Yeah, and that'd be more of a grant process. So I'm seeing, I'm seeing it both ways because we need to get it out here first, but we want to make sure that everyone has a shot.
Exactly.
And they would have to provide.
And I think the time, the timing, like the deadline of when they'll distribute the funds, that's going to be critical.
And Larry, to leave.
We don't want to wait till next year.
To leave this point, too, I think that even with these known entities, I mean, because you say they're going to give us like an MOU kind of a thing.
Right.
But we could give them an outline and a process and that same, that same outline could be used in the grant process. We could use the same.
That's a good idea.
Same format.
Right.
Just one is a little more expedited, right?
Sure.
Because we know who you are versus those who, you know, Matt, maybe for the Rotary Club, because they want, they're doing some food distribution. It's not really a new program either, they've been doing it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, but it's something that they haven't applied for.
But it's nothing that we have been involved in in the past.
That's right. We have not been a partner with them in the past.
Correct. Whereas these other ones we have, we've partnered with these other organizations, other than maybe the schools. And now the schools would be an example of a non-501(c)(3), however, that we might give money to.
And the other thing I just want to point out that when we say we, you know, that's why, I think it's a good point, it's like, is Larry going to do this personally? Because I don't see him having the time to do all this. So I think that if we're talking about getting it out yesterday, then we, as a council, need to make ourselves available in any way that we can. And if we need to have those emergency meetings and things like that, then we need to do that in order to help the community get that out faster.
Well, I think Larry's asking for authorization to cover these, these pieces down here.
Right.
So to give him some level of authorization to move forward. And then the grant process, we can set up a committee or whatever.
Correct.
To review those pieces, does that make sense?
No, that's absolutely my, was my recommendation, Mayor.
So are you, is everybody comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay.
Well, I just, I would just say, Bob, I agree with you on, people that like, that are doing the food don't get money from the city on any kind of regular basis. But we're in an emergency and if we can provide food through them, we'll get the service where they're providing the food, we're not buying the food, we're helping them provide the service to do it. I think that's, I think that's important. A lot of your big ones are well-funded and even though they always have their hand out and want more, they don't necessarily, not everybody need the money. And so I think that we also need to identify as we go along where the needs are. And we know with children, there's a need there, we know with food and housing and those kind of things, there's needs that we need to address. And so it'll be interesting to see how it progresses, but I think, I think things like that, I mean, when they were here in front of us, they didn't even have enough money. They just kind of lived to paycheck to paycheck, I think, the people who are doing the food thing, but because they care. And so I think providing that service is real important for this community.
Larry, then why don't you, if you can put that process together, I think it can be the same form, just one is more immediate for these items that you've listed here.
Right.
Give us a dollar amount that you recommend.
Right.
Us authorizing you to take care of this business immediately.
Okay.
And then we can establish maybe a threshold or a request maximum for the regular grant process.
Right.
Mayor, have we talked about the school, Seattle?
Yeah.
Okay. What did we decide on schools?
Well, it's, that's going to be, yeah, we need to get, we have the wish list from the elementary school, I just forwarded it to you.
Okay.
But we don't have numbers on it, so we're trying to get the numbers. Because I think what they're going to do is they're going to offer two programs, there's one that spiked, another one is from a MitroLink. And the MitroLink is free, but you have to buy the modem. The Cox will supply the modem, but it's a $10 a month fee.
Yeah.
So it may be, if we pay $100 for a modem for the MitroLink and then they get the free access, then it's a one-time fee, they have access for like ever, okay? Well, for as long as the MitroLink's around. Cox, however, it's the $10 a month. So do you then take, okay, well, if we're going to be $100 here, we give $100 over here and it's 10, 10 months of free internet? At least get some going, get some off the ground.
Are they, are they apples and apples speed-wise?
Yes, yeah, because we're asking, we're asking for both entities to have the same upload and download because the school has a certain requirement.
Yeah.
So they've identified what that is.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Do we know what kind of opening the elementary schools are planning on at this point in time?
It's going to come out tomorrow, I think.
Well, yeah, no, they came out with it already.
Right.
Well, I've seen the letter.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's publicly coming out, I guess.
Oh, busted, yeah, no, because there's supposed to be an announcement tomorrow.
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to come out and it's going to be the 20, or the 17th is when they're going to start.
Yes.
But it's going to be, it's learning process.
Of August, 17th?
Distance learning process, and they may not go face-to-face learning until the end of their first.
Fall break.
Yeah, till the fall break. So that's, that's kind of the short version.
Tell the mayor, I've got three granddaughters in elementary school and one just going into high school, and it is a concern.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because they're the most vulnerable, although they can usually get by, but taking it back home and there's a lot of issues that.
Yeah, and Joy's wish list had hotspots, too, so it's, this thing is moving, it's kind of morphing as we, as we dig into it, so.
You're definitely our expert on that.
Well, the hotspots could be checked out, it could be checked out for the whole year for, you know, for the kids to do their homework. That way then there isn't, there isn't per se an internet fee, it's the hotspot fee. So it may be a combination of things that happen. And the hotspot will be the most, because it's now, you know, you just, you send it home and they have internet access, as long as they have a piece of equipment. And all the high school kids, all those, all those kids in high school have one, they've all been assigned one, the elementary school purchased them, so they're going to be assigning them out here in the next week. So those, those laptops and/or devices.
Real good.
Will be, will be assigned here in the next week to two weeks.
And it's so critical, I have a, my sister-in-law's a teacher at the high school, and when they all went to their online learning back in March, she didn't hear from 70% of her students because they didn't have access to internet. You know, a lot of them have families that live in Mexico, so they left and, you know, left. And so it was, it was really challenging for the teachers. So I, I, you know, I don't know how they're going to do it.
I know, I know.
It's going to be a tough, tough thing.
Teacher safety, too, is a huge.
Huge. We already have a shortage.
Concern right now, I know that.
Can we go back to the city program?
A lot of the big unions aren't going to go in without, without certain.
Matt, you had a comment.
Have insurance on it and different things to help prevent it.
I wanted to hear more about our city program, too.
I know, yes, we got to go.
Sorry.
We got to move on. We gotta move on past education.
City programs.
And so if I could really talk a little bit about what, what I'm envisioning in my mind is that will, the staff will come to the council with their recommendation for the, for the program, which is gonna look very much similar to what we've, what this document looks like. We're going to put some thresholds on the residential assistance program and in my mind, I'm thinking perhaps maybe seeding this program with a half a million dollars to begin with, perhaps granting the city manager authority to enter into contracts either between 25 and 50,000 and anything over that threshold can come back to the mayor and council, or are you wanting to give me the authority to go over the 50,000 mark?
I, I like the 50,000 because that'll get us started and then if they need more, they can, we can seed.
Larry just said it, said it, said a number.
Okay, I'll do that.
Yeah.
All right.
Don't ask seven of us to make a decision.
I don't know, we'd all think about that.
But I, my question is, when you say come back to us.
Example, I'm envisioning that our partnership with the school district is gonna be more than that. It's good, on this list, it's going to be the largest single item under this residential assistance program. And certainly I feel comfortable moving forward with putting together with our team to put together an agreement with the school district and I'm always gonna keep the mayor and council apprised of what's going on, but if it comes back at a hundred thousand dollars, do you, do you wanna give me the authority to execute that, or do you want me bringing that particular agreement back to the mayor and council? Brett, I don't-
Yeah, and I, I think to Larry's point, as we structure it, it's just gonna be a question of, for example, if you structure the school for, you know, internet for school kids program, you have a different, couple of different ways that you can do that. You can say, we wanna do that, we're gonna fund it at 300, I'm just throwing that number out there, I have no idea what it would cost, but we're gonna fund it at 375,000 and we'll give Larry the approval to enter into agreements, you know, to provide internet to school kids for up to 375, that's one option you have, or to say, we're gonna fund it at 375, but we wanna see any of the agreements with Cox or with, you know, MitroLink or anybody else.
Would be with the schools, so schools would enter, enter with the provider.
Yeah, our funding, right, however we're gonna do it, if you're giving it to the school. So that's, you have the options as you schedule these programs and I think, I'm hearing-
I could, you could even, you could even suggest it's a hundred dollars a student who doesn't have internet access and the max is 250,000.
Yeah.
And that's the question, is if you give, you can give that authority and then let the program be run in the manner that the city manager does it through staff and making sure that we each sign the agreements, or you give that as direction for us and say, this is what we're gonna fund that, but then ask that we bring back any agreements with you, what the total cost is, what, you know, what those things are, either for approval or just for a court hearing.
Well, and I guess, my concern is that, you know, we know that, that's one that's gonna cost more, it's not gonna be 50,000, so I'm fine with giving Larry the authority. But I guess my question is, when you say coming back to us, you know, I don't wanna wait another two weeks. I mean, I think our community needs it now and so, you know, if we need to do something in a special meeting or something, as far as the policies and procedures, as far as how we have to do that, I, I wanna make sure we do it right, but I just feel like waiting another two weeks for you to come back.
I agree.
And ask us, is putting it two weeks too far.
You know, you know what would help is, could you give us, and maybe send it to us, what constitutes like an emergency meeting type sort of thing, so if that arises?
We can call any meeting we want.
Yeah.
We, we can, we just have to make sure, so we're gonna have a couple of different requirements.
I'm sure there's some guidelines though.
On 24 hours notice, but if we're gonna adopt a resolution or ordinance, we'll need at least 72 hours.
That's what I'm looking for, okay.
Or we can meet on 24 hours notice, but we'll need 72 if we wanna adopt a resolution or ordinance. But to, to your point, what I'm looking at is just, you're gonna have as council, the ability to set what this program looks like and what you want to be involved in, what you don't. So if, for example, we're talking about the school, you can set that number, you know, and say, it's a half a million dollars, Larry, go administer that program. And if you need more than half a million as you go through it, obviously we'd have to come back because we'd have to amend that. Same thing for a business program, you may not be setting the same thing, we may, and we'll have to talk as a staff, we may bring multiple resolutions to you at the next meeting, but for the business program, we may say, this is what the process is. It's going to be, this is the grant process, this is how the grants are gonna be reviewed and this is what we're going to do. So there may be certain meetings that we have to have, we don't, but it's up to you to set the, the program and we can tailor that based on the individual things. You may say residential, give out X amount, you know, to these and that's okay, but if you exceed any of those thresholds, we're coming back. And that may be either individually or in the aggregate.
Right.
One of the things about the school system is, the state pays the school system, I don't know if it's the 100th day, after so many days, they get paid for the student count. Question is, virtual may not count. It may have to be students that are actually sitting in the building and so that's gonna be a big question for them, you know, is how, how do we handle that?
Right.
Matt?
I was just kinda thinking like Brett said, say for the, you know, utility up to 50,000 for the school district, authorize Larry up to 250,000, whatever that number, you know, we don't have to say 50,000 only, just depends on what, what types, you know, 50,000's not gonna help the schools that much, we could go a higher threshold with the school to authorize you for, for the contracts.
Hey Rebecca, could you hear me? So the sound isn't working on channel 11 by the way.
Oh, shit.
Should we repeat all that?
So say that again, Matt, what were you saying?
So, yeah, just like kinda what Brett was saying, was like, we could, to authorize Larry to get this out there quicker, for like the, the partner, you know, for the, the resident, the rental temporary housing assistance with Car United, we could authorize 25,000, 50,000, whatever that number is. But the school district, if it, if it has to do with the school internet access, we could say, hey, we authorize you 250,000 for this one.
Right, we could say.
So that way he doesn't, we're not stuck at 50,000. Can we do it that way Brett? Is that, that's what you're saying?
And then put a statement in there, anything over would have to come back.
Would come back, yeah.
You know, to, to the council or whatever.
But I would like, but put a much higher threshold for the school district and other stuff we may be talking about, so that-
So I think I understand that and I'll certainly go with Larry, but that's kinda the direction we're looking, but I, that's what I was trying to say is that we-
I'm not gonna say, yeah.
They don't all have to be equal.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, not just anything over 50,000.
If you know how you want to do the school, you know, we can set one thing for that, something else for residential, a process for dealing with the business, you know, if this is what we're gonna do.
A grant process.
Beautification project, you know, we, so we can set something different for each one.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
That's exactly.
One resolution or multiple resolutions, that'll be up to us in the first few years.
So how do we get that done before two weeks from now?
Well, we, we can work on establishing a special meeting, Mayor, and bringing this before the council.
Are you all okay with that?
Yes, yes, so I think, so a question back to doing them different, which I have no problem with that, so say going back to the business and nonprofit, funding, grants, whatever, so that, are you considering kind of what you outlined in here, that you would have an application, you know, give up to so many dollars, they have to submit the receipt, well, not receipts, but their, whatever documents that show and then you, are you going to do the same thing as far as you will go through those? Oh, okay, what are your-
That'd be a separate committee.
It is, it is a committee, okay, so that's what I, that's what I read, I just wanted to see.
And I guess first and foremost, what I was just gonna add on this business, the business assistance program, is that through our engagement with our local nonprofit community, which is the direction that I had been given from the mayor and council last time, I don't know that there's any local nonprofit that is, that is providing a, a program of this nature, all right? They, there's been a handful that have said, if you'd like us to do this, we'd be more than glad to attempt to create a program and stand it up. And so, number one, is I wanted to let the mayor and council know that this evening, there are entities outside of Penon County, outside of Casa Grande, that are doing this for cities of Phoenix and Tucson and some of the other cities that have expressed an interest, there is a fee for, for those engagements. I, I did not get the sense from the council at the last meeting that you're wanting to do that. And so ultimately what I'm envisioning is that we need to do that internally with our staff. And that may be hiring a temporary employee to do some of, to handle some of this, it may be rearranging, reallocating some of the service, some of the assignments that we've got with specific staff, but I wanted to make sure the council was comfortable with that before I, I went that far.
Yes.
On, on a business program, but my, my thought is, is that if the council is wanting to move forward with, with this and we've talked about the, the gift clause and, and provisions and, and the like, and as everybody knows, cities are, cities are taking different approaches to this, my recommendation would be that there would be some form of a committee that would ultimately review those applications and, and have some type of a consistent parameters. I've, I've distributed to the mayor and council a copy of the application that we've put together, together to this point. If you have any comments on those, let us know, we're going to try to really dial in the parameters of, of a program of this nature for the business community, because ultimately it has, there has to be in my mind, additional types of evaluation and thresholds that each of these businesses are meeting in order to qualify for the grant program.
Right, okay.
Okay? So if there's no-
I just make a comment, I think Larry's done such a good job. You have on the COVID, and Larry, you've kinda kept us all filled in on every one of these things that, that you have on your desk. And, and so I, I think that it, it keeps us up to speed a lot better than, sometimes it happened in past, past times, but the, I, I guess the, the two things I would just ask is, is basically we're still looking at the cameras.
Yes.
And we're still looking at the underpass.
Absolutely, in fact.
Okay, very good.
In fact, that, that is the third component of the program, if I can, and I know, I know we're gonna run short on time here.
Okay.
But, one of the primary differences with the, my council's aware of this, but I just, I say it for the benefit of those that, that may be watching, even though they may not be able to hear me right now, is that the majority of these items that are included in the city program are really just a budget allocation at this point. It's, we will be following our procurement practices when we, when we move through each of these programs and so tonight, what I'd like is to just ensure that, that the items that I've outlined, outlined to the council and are recommending here are items that you are comfortable staying in the program, so that when we bring it back to the mayor and council at the next meeting or at our special meeting, that, that they're included. We've talked about the 25% match to the DEMA and Lima expenses and again, that is, there's two pots of money, there's the money that the governor, the CARES Act money that the governor distributed, which is the bigger pot of funds that we've been talking about today, but there are, there are also emergency management funds that are specific to the COVID-19 incident that we can apply for reimbursement. You can apply to both, for both, for one expense to both, to both funding sources and so what we're, what we're finalizing is our first report and request for funding through DEMA Lima for those events, those costs that we've incurred, which are primarily overtime that's been incurred by our staff as a result of the COVID, to equipment, personal protective equipment that we may have purchased to some of the cleaning, those will be the types of applic, the, the types of expenses that'll be included in an application, but we're subject to a 75% reimbursement, so the city has to come out of our own pocket with the 25%. One of the recommendations that I've made is that the 25% that, that we would be coming out of pocket ultimately gets backfilled with the, with the money that's come through the CARES Act. So everybody comfortable with that staying on the list?
Yes.
The next item is the purchase of the body cams and I was hoping that I would be able to give the mayor and council a better overview of the costs tonight. We have gotten, I know that, that the chief has shared with you individually, some of the updated numbers for the, for the body cams. We're having some discussions about whether or not we end up equipping every officer and detention officer with a body cam or whether or not we're, we only put, put them on, our patrol staff. We'll likely have, we'll likely have an option for the council to consider on both of those when we come back at a future date with a, with a, with a council agenda item, but what, I am attempting to finalize the cost of all of the IT devices and everything that's necessary to upload the video, the cost associated with bringing on the staff and we also are, are looking into the option of, of consulting just, you know, for, for redaction and those types of things, just so the mayor and council has a better, has a better understanding of that. But that will be, we're, that'll be an item that comes back before the mayor and council for your consideration in a, in a regular council meeting. One of the items that I had introduced at the last meeting is a restoration of the partnership funding. I know the mayor and council's aware that we asked our partners, that we typically fund to take a, a cut similar to what we asked our, our departments to take as part of the budget process. There would be an option obviously to restore that, it would, when you, when you look at what we've asked them to cut in total and, and, and what we would be restoring, it would be a total of 16,200 would be the total impact on the, on, on this, on this particular budget. Any, any questions on that? Is that something that the council would like for us to, for us to keep in the program?
Absolutely, I think it's a small enough amount, but it's, it just shows our good faith.
And it'll make a big difference to those.
Yes, it will.
I, I've, in my discussion with some of the, with, with some of the organizations, I've cautioned them on the fact that we're still waiting to see what this economic impacts, what the economic impact of this COVID incident's going to drive. And just because we're restoring this year doesn't necessarily mean that we won't be faced with additional cuts next year, but this is an opportunity for us to keep them whole for a year.
That's good.
Yeah, it is.
And then the last item is the Union Pacific Underpass Beautification Project and, and ultimately what we're asking the council to do is set aside the budget authority, I'm, I'm estimating that to be 75,000, which is, which is an estimate at this point of the variance between what we've already allocated through general fund dollars as well as the grants that Gloria and the Arts and Humanities Commission has been successful at obtaining and grants that we've applied for as well. So that's an estimate, but I, I thought just to give you the-
Matt and I can get down there with our brushes.
Yeah, that's right.
We all will, we'll all be there.
There was people last weekend.
We'll volunteer.
So, so I'm hearing all of these items are good to stay in the program, okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh yeah.